Okay, I'd like to call this regular council meeting order. And we're also going to have a work session and a regular council meeting tonight. Things will be voting on in the second half of the meeting. I'm gonna open the meeting, before I get started, we were in executive session discussing some potential litigation, things with pertaining litigation. This time I'll open it up to the mayor who wants to do some presentations. Chief Allen, if you want to come up.
As most of you know, he retired as part of Drug Dog and K-9 Dog back in April. And the council, mayor honored that with a resolution. Kilo is his name. Also too, the department wanted to present him and the handler, who is Officer Palmer, with his plaque through the police department, says, "Recognition of Police K-9 Kilo for your 10 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Bristol Borough." Congratulations.
I guess I'll just say thank you again. He's not here tonight, wasn't really sure, didn't know we were doing this for here for a different reason, but I'm just gonna say thank you. It's been a pleasure. I thank the entire council, past and present, who helped me get the dog and supported us throughout the entire thing. The chief boarder, Chief Henry, couldn't have done it without them. Kilo was an amazing dog, and he's very missed by everybody, I think. So, thank you. Do you want me to do that now? Or do I have to go up here? You want me to do it?
Do you want me to do it or voting?
I'll do it.
I can't believe it's 10 years since the dog.
I can't believe I've been here 18 years. It goes by quick. Do I need to hold this, or?
No.
Are they gonna hear me? Okay. I'm Officer Charles Palmer, been with the police department for about 18 years now. As you know, I was the K-9 officer for 10 years. During those 10 years, I did a lot of stuff with the schools and with the kids, and I really enjoyed that. And I was a little worried that afterwards, after he was retired, I wouldn't have the opportunity to do the community stuff that I was doing with Kilo. I was recently elected the vice president of the union, and as soon as I got the opportunity to be in a leadership role, one of the things I came up with one day while I was watching some kids fish with two poles and five kids was Fish with a Cop program. If you have to excuse me, I'm not too good with public speaking, but...
You're doing good.
Hi, Mom? Anyway, I came with a Fish with a Cop program this September 15th at 10:00 at the canal. We would like to have a little get-together with the kids in town. It would be 12 and under only. We're cutting it off at about 50 kids because we're very limited with the resources. It's completely free to the children of Bristol Borough. If you're 12 and under and you live in Bristol Borough, you can come, it's completely free. We're gonna provide the poles, the bait, we're gonna have prizes, we have a face painter, a DJ. We have somebody coming to do a little spin art class. We have food being donated. So, it should be a good day. We're here to, one, ask permission to use the lagoon area, and then I'm gonna make a little subtle request towards the end there. You'll see it. We've been pretty lucky so far. We've gotten about $250 worth of donations from the public. We've gotten about 20 different prizes donated from the public. Our own officers have donated $200 in cash. Our union is gonna donate $300. And we're still looking to cover some of the costs and stuff like that. Here's the subtle part. So, if anybody in the public would like to donate, what we're asking, which is easier for us, is to donate Walmart gift cards. Because that way, there's not cash being exchanged. It'd be much easier just to get the Walmart gift cards so we can go and buy all the fishing gear. Because the whole point is to try to give the kids something to do other than sitting around and having the idle hands where they could get in trouble. I know growing up in Bristol my whole life, I fished more than anything, and I really believe that helped keep me out of trouble, some of it. And I think it's a win-win situation with the negative perception of the police lately in the media. People will be able to meet and greet the police in an environment where we could joke around, have fun, and let them see us, because our family's gonna come and help out also. It's not gonna be just the cops. Our family's gonna show up. We're gonna bait the hooks, we're gonna take the fish off the hooks, we're gonna weigh it for them. The only thing the kid has to do is reel the fish in. Like I said, if they don't have a pole, we'll supply it, all the tackle, everything. And every kid will receive a prize. And, you know, the second half of it is, we'll get the kids interested in something, and we'll give them the means. We're gonna give them the pole, everything that they're gonna be able to keep afterwards. Give them the means of having some type of pastime and some type of hobby, other than sitting around with other kids going, "What do you wanna do? I don't know. Let's start this rock at this window." Which, we've all been there. We've all grown up in town, we've all done dumb things, and you know how it is when you're sitting around in your board. You can get yourself into a lot of trouble. I was lucky that I didn't get more.
Lucky Dinky caught ya.
Yeah. So, I mean, if it's okay, I would like to pass out the flyers. I have the flyer, the registration form, and the rules right here that we've been handing out. August 25th is the last day for registration. If you're not registered, by August 25th, you will not be allowed to participate, because we are limited with resources, and we can't have 100 kids running around that we're responsible for. So, we're gonna limit it to a certain amount. We'll cut, have the cutoff date for registration. Every kid will be given a shirt, so we know what kids are ours and what kids aren't. If you don't have the shirt and you weren't registered, you're not gonna be able to participate.
When Chucky mentioned this, I, he was gonna come here and speak to council, I told him that I don't see any reason why council won't contribute whatever you need for this program. You know, just let us know what...
I wouldn't ask for a set amount. Whatever you guys feel like, if you just wanna donate, that's, you guys can decide.
The other thing I'd like to tell her on that, which I had said to you, is, I'd like to see more things like this take place, more things with police, like, and I mentioned this to Joe years ago, you know, you had the Big Brother thing with the cop and the kid. A lot of kids don't have, you know, parents or, you know, models that people look up to. And I just think that I would really like to expand this program if you guys have the time. And I know everybody's busy. But I think anything you can do in the community that fishing or anything, I personally would support 100 percent. And personally, you know, I'll give you 100 or $200 myself to get this program started.
I really appreciate that. And that's, just real quick, before I take any questions from the council, that's my hope. Like I said, this is the first time I've been in a position where I was in a leadership role in the department. It's through the union, and I would like to take a little more control, because we've talked about it many times as a union, but no one's really pushed for it. So, I ran this by the chief, and Chief Henry was completely supportive and backed us 100 percent. He's been great with it and has given his input and helped out. Sergeant Moore is the president of the union, he's been supportive, and the union's been supportive of it. So, what we're gonna do is, if this is successful and we can pull this off, I'd like to follow it up next year with doing a 18 to 12-year-old and then a 12 and under. So, we're separating the age groups, so we don't have, you know, because it is, it's a competition. It's gonna be a tournament. It's gonna be the total weight gets to pick first from the prize table, you know, whoever has the highest total weight. And then second highest picks second, third picks third. So, every kid will get a prize, but it is a competition. If you want that specific prize, better catch the most weight, you know? So, try to make it a little more even. We'll break the age groups. And next year, if it's successful, we'll do both age groups. And this spring, I was discussing with Chief Henry and Sergeant Moore, I was looking and seeing him doing something a little more fun, maybe something like a kickball with a cop.
Yeah. Anything, I think anything you can do, and you guys can put together...
We're gonna try.
You have, I mean, look, we got a recreation program that we spend money on that we could fund things, so don't hesitate to come.
Is it okay if I pass these out real quick? And then, I think Tony had his arm up first for a question that I can answer them on.
Thanks, Chuck.
What's up?
I appreciate that.
Vote for Chris.
Oh, I'll wait for you to get up.
Thank you, Chuck.
Yes. There's actually, you guys can guess now if anybody else wants one.
All right, a couple things. First thing is, can we do the registration first? Put it out so we see how many kids that we have that would be...
That's it. The registration's already been out. We've had this out already.
How many kids have we had?
We have over 40 kids already signed up.
Oh, okay.
We're gonna probably cut it off somewhere around 50. August 25th is the deadline, because like I said, I wanna get shirts made up, so I'm getting the size of the shirts and everything. That way, we have bright orange shirts on each kid that's participating. We can watch them. Parents have to be there with the child to watch them. We're not taking responsibility, we're not gonna babysit. So, you have to have adult there with them supervising at all times. But we will have officers and family members of our own helping you take the fish off the hook. So, if you're not a fisherman, and you're like, "I'm not touching a fish, I'm not touching a worm," we'll do all that for you. We'll bait the hook, we'll put the hook on, we'll tie the rod up, we'll take the fish off the hook, we'll weigh it, we'll throw the fish back. The only thing you have to do is let your kid reel in the fish. They're the only ones that are allowed to reel in the fish. That's all we ask.
Now, the only way they could sign up is through this paper application?
Yes. We're kinda winging it. I've never done anything like this before. I've never organized anything like this before. I've participated in a lot of events. I did a lot of fishing tournaments for charities and stuff. I've never run it, though, so I'm kinda winging it. Hopefully, this'll be a good learning experience. If anybody has any suggestions, they wanna drop off or send to me through Facebook or email, or a lot of you guys have my phone number, feel free to give me any suggestions. I'm always open to them. Which, I've had a lot of suggestions of doing, like, vendors and making a fundraiser. I don't wanna get involved in that. I just wanna make it about the kids, having fun and...
That's the other thing I wanted to, I would like to see it more, instead of having a DJ and having this big giant, you know, like circus environment, just to kinda just have it like, just fishing with a cop, you know?
Yeah.
Just find kids that's still based on it.
The DJ came to me and said, "If you need anything, let me know." And one of the things I would like to have available is a PA system. So, he said, "I'm gonna set up." I said, "All right." I was like, and he said, "Do you want me to play some music?" I said, "If you wanna play some, just low-key music. We're not gonna have music blaring, it's not gonna be like a dance party. Just, you know, like, a little low-key music, just in the background, so the kids have something to listen to, you know? Like I said, there would be a face painter there, because some of the kids are, they're gonna be very young, or kids as young as nine months signed up, that the parents are bringing just for the fun of it. And that's, that's fine."
And you may have somebody that wants a fish, and the other kids don't want a fish in the family, and do the face painting.
And that's the thing, the siblings are welcome to come. They can participate in the tournament if they're over 12, but they are more than welcome to come. The food's free, the face painting's free. They can come, run around, have some fun. If they wanna help their little brother cast or set the hook or whatever, that's fine. Brother or sister, I'm sorry. You know, that's what it's about. It's about fun, enjoying yourself, and putting a hobby into their life that they can follow through with, and now they'll have a pole. Because, I mean, I remember as a kid, piecing together poles in the basement, trying to get one that worked good enough to go fishing, and going out and digging up some worms and spending hours and hours of fishing, running out of worms, like, "All right, start flipping rocks and finding more and more." You know, it's something you can do all day, and you really don't have to spend any money.
Now, I'm gonna share my first fishing experience I have. Here with Chuck.
Okay.
Chuck, I have one question. Like, I have a son that would eat this up, he would love it. And if there are spaces available, I would obviously love for him to do it. But I'm wondering, are we reaching out maybe to, I think to Ralph's point, kids who are maybe looking more or needing more of the role models in their lives?
I... That was my whole point. I've spoken to several people while I've been working in both ends of town, every part of town, and I've spoken to every level of, you know, well-being, where people who may not have the means to go out and buy their kid a couple of poles to, you know, participate. And I asked him, I said, "How can I get this out to everybody?" Because I've done other events where it was a same eight or nine people who come, and I know them. I know their family, and I'm like, "It's great, it's fun, but I'm not reaching who I wanna reach."
Right.
And the opinions I got from every ward was, "Put the posters out. Don't do it just on Facebook. Put the posters in Unimart and Selecto and the barber shops." And that's what I did. I passed them out everywhere. I put the flyers out everywhere I could possibly think of, and people have been really receptive of it, and I've gotten a lot of good feedback. Sergeant Moore's the same thing. He says he gets stopped all the time. People are really excited about it.
Great.
So...
I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Anybody else? Chuck, I just, it's a great program. Yeah, it looks like you put a lot of work into it, and I'm sure it'll be successful. One thing I'd like to, at least if you could inquire, Crane Props in Bristol, one of our own stores right there, has bait, and I don't know about tackle, or I don't even know how, you know, how they sell, but I do know they, you know, they're looking for that kind of business, so maybe you can just inquire with them to see. Sometimes you just assume, somebody might assume that they can't do something, but if they're given an opportunity, I think it might be, it'd be helpful to them, it'd be helpful to the whole street.
Councilwoman Contracey, that is a good point, and I've already spoken with him. He approached me as soon as he seen it and wanted to donate right away. He is gonna be participating in it. As soon as it's over, like I said, I'm kinda throwing this together and winging it. As soon it's all over, I would like to come back and do a presentation afterwards, and I would have a list of everyone who donated, because there's so many people. I have gentlemen outside of town who have nothing to do with Bristol, doesn't have any kids, called and donated 10 collapsible fishing poles. He said, "I've seen it online, it's a great thing." He goes, "Please, just don't mention my name." He's like, "I have nothing to do with your town." That's the type of response I've been getting. It's been amazing. And the people in town, the businesses in town, every one of them is calling me, especially if they have anything to do with fishing, and they're trying to contact me. It's been a little tough, because I work nights, and I've been running, I've been working a lot. We've been a little busy, and, so I'm trying to get back to everybody. But it's working out pretty well. It's coming together pretty well, and we're getting a lot of cooperation. And that's the way Bristol is. I mean, everybody sees something good, and they all wanna jump in and be involved and help, so...
All right, just to wrap it, I don't know how many more things we have on it, but two things. One, I think that where you want checks sent, in case, let's say, you may get people from home that wanna send a check, is it to the PBA?
If anybody wants to donate, they can come down to the police station. If they're gonna do a check, they can make it out to the Bristol Borough Police Benevolacy Association, the PBA. And they can drop it off during the day between 8:00 and 4:00, and that's when they can get the registration forms, between 8:00 and 4:00, Monday through Friday, down at the station. Most people already know that. Like I said, we've been...
No, but I mean, people at home that just wanna donate.
Yeah, they can drop...
Let's say you get enough money for this, then you can start a fund which's for other things.
Yeah.
So, just write check, anybody at home watching can write a check to Bristol Borough PBA.
PBA, yes.
And make a note on it for the fishing. But if you get more, you know what I mean? This may become, you may be shocked.
Well, if there's excess, then we'll carry it over to the next event. We'll have a separate fund where we can track it.
The other thing is, Chucky, I think if council co-sponsors this, we could cover you under the borough's insurance.
Okay.
Just, I think for, to protect everybody, I think that, Chief, why don't you work that out with the manager?
Sure.
Cover you then under the borough's insurance policy, just, God forbid, you never know.
Good idea.
Anybody else have anything?
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
All right, Nick, I'm gonna, instead of holding you up, I'm gonna let me speak about the event.
Nick Rizzo, 466 Logan Street. I'm here tonight representing Bristol Cultural Historical Foundation. I am a board member and this year's chairperson for 2018 HBD. So, I thank you for letting me speak tonight, because I know on your agenda is the signing of the contract for the Gazella, so I thought it'd be a good opportunity to give some updates of what's planned for this year and the evening before. I just wanna express that the PSPG and Gazella crew were very impressed by Bristol Borough last year, and they wanted to return this year, even before we start planning events. So, they were very impressed with the new peers and docs and overall Bristol in general. You may have seen on social media or some advertising going on that the night before, Friday evening, October 19th, there will be a reception to kick off Bristol Day. It's been given the nickname of Gazella Bration by our president, Jan Ruano. If anybody has ever been to Jazz on the River, it will be a similar event to that. Robert Strasser and Bruce Lowe thankfully have agreed to allow us to use their patio. And what we're going to do, it'll be a ticket price of $50. That'll include dinner, drinks, and then access to the Gazella, plus DJ entertainment by Graywood Dances. Tickets are available in the tax office, Mignoni Jewelry, and Great IDs by Ann. This will be different than last year, as it will not be limited to the number of attendees, because that's what happened last year, it was limited to 60 or 65 people. And the dinner will not be actually on the ship. Again, it's on the King George patio. And the rain date for that is Saturday evening after Bristol Day, same time, 6:00 to 9:00 PM. And just real quick, I just wanted to highlight some featured attractions for Bristol Day this year. To highlight the river and pier, the Gazella tours again will be 10... I just wanna clarify something about the time. The Gazella, of course, is here 10 to 4:00, but the line will open at 10 o'clock and closing tentatively around 3:00. That's because last year, the lines were incredibly long, and the Gazella crew can determine how many people can get on and off in a determined amount of time. So, this year, we don't want to turn people away and cut the line off, or people, rather, people standing in line and then telling them they can't get on. So, tentatively, we're going to advertise that the line will have to close around 3:00. It could be a little later, depending upon how many people are in line. Bristol Township Drummers with Attitude will be performing this year in the Riverfront Park. This is the first time, I believe, they've been here. Bracken Drum and Bugle will be performing as well. Something new, we have a New Jersey First Regiment. They are revolutionary encampment reenactors. Again, they will be a first time here in Bristol Borough, and they will be in Lions Park for the entire day. Kate Murway recently did a very detailed article in the advance on them, and they are very excited about coming to Bristol, and they have performed at various venues, including Germantown and Valley Forge. The Friends Meeting House on Market Street is hosting an archaeology dig, and that will happen all day. And of course, we'll have house tours, the tea, which will be a ticketed item. Public buildings will be open. I don't have much information yet on that. That information will be coming in probably by the end of the month. Mary Deswalde will head up a children's corner in the library this year, and the students from Snyder Girardi are putting on an immigration play as part of that. Also, the library is featuring a special exhibit on the history of small business, kinda piggybacking off of the Small Business Revolution, dining and shopping in Bristol Borough then and now. And the 7th Annual Car Show at Snyder Girardi will also take place. Lastly, Harold Michener is working on some new Racklough Street tours, something a little different than what we had, so more information will be posted about that as far as times once I know them. So, that's basically it for now. I'll open up to any questions or comments.
Questions for Nick?
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. All your hard work, Nick.
Thank you.
Just so everybody can hear this at home, they're having a problem with the feed, and it's Comcast's feed again, the pictures aren't great. They can hear your voice clear, but the picture has a lot of lines in it. But we've been informed by Comcast, they're gonna replace the entire line that's coming into the building within the next, hopefully, month, maybe two months. They were in last week looking at the equipment and everything. Just so everybody can hear, we had the problem with Verizon, and that took a while, I think, to finally get resolved. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to councilwoman Rodriguez, who has a couple presentations.
Is there anybody here from the theater?
Ma'am.
Hi, how are you?
Great. Kevin Maroney.
Benny Rosling, I'm from...
Do you need a microphone?
On behalf of Bristol Borough, council, the mayor, the manager, and all our beautiful people from Bristol, we'd like to present you with the check that we give you every year. We'd like to thank you for everything you do for our community. I know there's a lot of programs, and I know they have a children's workshop in the summer.
The Art Regis Summer Camp?
Yes, which I hear a lot of great things about. We have discount theater shows for the borough, but I'll let him touch on this, and we'd like to thank you for everything you do for us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hello, good afternoon, or good evening. I'm Kevin Maroney. I'm the managing director at the Bristol Riverside Theater. Thank you to the council and to the citizens of the borough for the continued support. One of the main things, as the councilwoman was pointing out, that we're able to do with this support is actually the first two shows, the first two previews of each of our main stage shows, there are $5 tickets available to residents of the borough. And so, which is a, is a, is a pretty nice benefit, and it's, we really wanna encourage everybody to come out when they can. And so, we have five main stage shows. Real quickly, I'll tell you what they are. We have, we're starting off with an Irma Bombeck Show at Wit's End. It's called, "The One Woman Show," about Irma Bombeck. That's in September. In October, we have The Rivals, which is a world premiere musical. If all goes well, it will end up in Broadway. So, that means that Bristol residents can come see a potential Broadway show for $5. Then, we have our Christmas, our Christmas show, the concert that Keith Baker does. Then after that, back on the main stage, On Golden Pond is a show that we're gonna do. And then, The Sunshine Boys by Neil Simon will be the fourth show. The fifth show is a relatively new play by Lucas Nath, an up-and-coming playwright. It's called The Christians. And that's actually the, will be our version of our community program, where The Christians, the setting is in a, is in a church, and the choir will be played by community members. So, I would also invite folks to come out and audition for that. Be in the choir, be a part of the show. It's a, it's a fun thing to do. But again, we're able to do it because of your support. We certainly appreciate it. I'm happy to answer any questions, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin?
Yes, sir. How do people come to audition for, we got a lot of great choirs in town, a lot of great singers. How do they come to...
We'll put out an audition notice. That show is in May, so we'll probably audition, do that audition in the springtime or late winter, but we'll put out an audition notice. We'll also have that information on our website.
Okay, maybe somebody could come here and say, "Auditions are open for this."
I would be happy to do that.
If anybody from the borough wants to come?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Betty?
Allison?
Everybody wanna come up?
for the Harriman Methodist Church. Allison has been working tirelessly with this group of women, and I'm sure the church itself, not just these women. And she has a couple programs, and she's gonna let us know what's going on throughout the year. But on behalf of Bristol Borough Council, the mayor, Mr. Dillon, is here, but I recognize by borough council and mayor on their 100th year anniversary, start at 1918 to 2018. From Bristol Borough. Thank you so much. You all.
I'm Allison Angelaccia from Harriman Church. I'm the chairperson of the 100th Anniversary Committee, and with me is our pastor, Candice Carter, and one of our members, Devetta. Carter?
Yes.
Yes. And we've been working all year, celebrating our 100th anniversary. We've had guest speakers each month, former pastors, different people come in to celebrate with us. I think a lot of people here in town know Harriman Church from the day school, which is celebrating its 50 years this year. So a lot of people have had their children come through the day school and very successfully become, you know, better people and good students to head into the school district. So thank you so much for this recognition, all of you. And we are putting together a, we have a few events left to go, but the biggest one is we're going to have a luncheon that's going to be held at Georgine's and we're putting together a program, asking anybody in the community if they want to contribute to the program with an ad for your business or just a message of well wishes for that. So I have flyers to hand out for that if that's okay, but.
Does your pastor want to say something?
Good evening to everyone, I just want to thank you for this wonderful, wonderful plaque, Betty. And we are just so grateful that you allowed us to come and share information with you tonight and we just love to invite you to just be a part of whatever we're doing at Harriman. Our church is open to many, many different organizations. We have the Shared Mill Program, we have AA, we have the 4-H Club, we have lots and lots of groups who come in and out of our church each and every day. So we would like to keep it open and keep people flowing in and so we invite you to come in and we thank you so very much for sharing this time with us tonight. Amen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nobody's here from the duop, right? I know Anna was trying to get here but something came up, so I'll mention, I'll speak about that one. I think that's everything with presentations and am I missing anybody? We're going to hold up public participation, I'm going to go to Mr. Pezz for, I don't know where he's, Bill. There's a glare tonight unless my eyes are getting worse.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a really feel-good meeting tonight, right? What Chuck and the police department is doing with the kids fishing with the cop is really a nice idea. I told them I would make a donation provided that he did not use it to buy a fishing pole because I've never caught a fish in my life and I don't want to jinx a kid. So, but it's going to be, it's going to be really nice and congratulations to the Harriman Methodist Church and School. I couldn't help but think about Justin Saxon and Vince Catroche here, Melissa, all the, my kids, Tiffany and our grandchild who went through that Christmas program and it's a great institution and we wish you the best and congratulations on what you've done. I have a couple of announcements to make, but before I do, there's something I want to clear up and make as crystal clear as I can, okay? Raising the Bar, the civic group in town that is made up entirely of volunteers who spend a lot of their time working in behalf of the town, we are a taxable organization, we pay taxes and I'm happy to, property taxes. And I want to make it crystal clear tonight that Raising the Bar's property taxes are fully paid. 2016, 2017 municipal taxes for 2018, trash collection county taxes, fully paid. Just want to make sure, should I say that again or is that clear enough for everyone?
I would say it again.
Pardon me?
I would say it one more time.
Raising the Bar's property taxes are fully paid. Thank you. Couple of announcements. First of all, when we had the dock dedication last summer, we announced at that time, Raising the Bar announced at that time that we wanted to honor Ralph for the unbelievable work that he did in making that project come to fruition. I mean tireless work for years and we thought it was fitting that there would be some kind of a commemorative thing to honor him in that regard. And we said that we wanted to present a plaque for that pier dock area in that regard. Since then, we've decided that it would be good if we, at our expense, since then, we decided it would be good if we expanded that to include the different elected officials and people who helped make the project a success, whether it was funding sources or whatever, and that includes the Borough Council. So I just wanted to make that announcement again, I'm wondering, I want to make sure that it's okay with council members if we include your names on the plaque. It's going to be a very nice plaque, any objections to that? Okay, very good. Anything else I need to say about that, Ralph, in terms of, we'll work with the borough in terms of the design and the placement and whatnot?
I appreciate it.
Yep, well, it's well deserved, well deserved. You know, sometimes we, you take things for granted, you launch a thing like that and it's still there and it's thriving and it's great to see the boats come and the boaters walk up on the street and people on Mill Street are seeing the change and it's really nice, but we shouldn't take it for granted, so again, well deserved. Just a couple of, pardon me?
I just want to mention that this weekend I was in Washington with Congress, former Congressman Fitzpatrick and Brian going over a lot of things and hopefully they're out working again to try to help Bristol with some more funding and some different things and been in touch with Senator Tomlinson, so between Brian and Tommy and Mike always pushing Bristol. We had a couple of good meetings in Washington and I think hopefully in the future there may be some things down the road. There's projects that we're trying to accomplish which I'll leave off the table right now, but again, them two guys are really doing a lot to try to help this town.
Yeah, it's very important that we continue to promote, that we continue to build partnerships and networks. Raising the Bar does that all the time, I've been asked to moderate a discussion, that we have a partnership with Pensbury Manor now. They've done things for us in Bristol, they're asking us to do things for them. I'm going to be moderating an event at Pensbury Manor to celebrate the anniversary of William Penn and every living Pennsylvania governor is going to be there on the panel, so it's going to be really cool. And Senator Tomlinson's going to be the keynote speaker there. So we'll give you more information about that as we get closer. Two events I want to tell you about. One, and I'm glad Kevin's here tonight, we started a new organization or a new program called Arts Alive in Bristol Borough. It's done in cooperation with the Bristol Riverside Theater, specifically with Keith Baker, it was Keith's idea. And what Keith wants to do is showcase emerging talent, showcase the next generation of performers. So we're going to be having a series of programs at the Center for the Arts, produced by Keith Baker. The first one is August 23rd, it's a cabaret and the admission is five dollars. We want to keep it low, we just want people to come and enjoy it. So put that on your calendar, August 23rd at 6:30, five dollars, Arts Alive in Bristol Borough. Then there's going to be another one on the 30th that will feature Keith himself and we'll give you more information about that. The other event is, Raising the Bar is sponsoring, this is the 40th anniversary of the film Grease. It's a great, relaxing, enjoyable film and we're going to have a party at the Regency Room of Number Three Firehouse and it's called Summer Lovin'. And what we'll be doing is we'll be playing the film in the background, somebody said, we're just going to sit there and watch the movie, no, we're going to be playing the film in the background, we're going to be having milkshakes and hamburgers, we're going to be having hula hoop contests or whatever. Ron, what else have you got?
Um, just all kinds of stuff.
I was trying to get Ron to say we're going to have a hickey contest, but he didn't say that, but it's on, it's on the invitation. But anyway, it's going to be a fun night, we have a cash, we have a, it's fifty dollars, the price includes, the price includes, well, we are, we're having a hickey contest, it's on the invitation. I'm sorry, I just report the news.
I know, I saw it, I saw it.
It's fifty dollars, it includes beer and wine and your food and you're welcome to come in costume or just casual, but it's going to be a lot of fun. So that is on, when's that, Ron? 22nd, September 22nd. All right, my point is there's so many events, we have the St. Anne's Fair coming up, we have so many events, we have the Duell Concert. I want to encourage people from Bristol to go to visitbristolborough.com, that's the website that Raising the Bar sponsors that is intended to include all the activities that we have. And I also want to point out that the website is only as vibrant and current as people feed it information. So if you have an event that you think is something that would be attractive to people from out of town, send it to us so that we can put it on the website. The River Runner is up and running, people are having a good time with it, we're selling ads for it and we sold out the ads in the first three hours, we put them, we put them up for availability and they'll be on the River Runner soon, it's a lot of fun. Everything we do is based on volunteers. We run, we run an art center with 60 volunteers, the River Runner has volunteer drivers, everything we do is done by volunteers. So thank you very much and.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. How do you even see you there? I was looking at that glove, that's why I didn't see Pezz.
Ah, nice.
Is that?
Hey, Bob. Yeah, you missed it, right?
It was him, I was.
You should have brought gelato for everybody. You have the best.
Next meeting I come to.
All right.
Oh, when's that going to be?
Say it, Bob.
I don't know if it's up to public participation.
Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, go to the podium, state your name and address.
I'm here to ask for his council's help, I need your help.
All right, just state your name and all the numbers.
Bernard Mazzaki. You know, I don't know how to get this O'Boyle's project going, NovaCare, it's been going on for eight years, it seems to never end. You know, Billy, obvious, you know, now they want me, they want me to put up, I asked if I could put LED lights in, they want me to get all the drawlings done over so I can add LED lights. It's not customary for them to approve this and say, we have to see it from a lighting consultant or something like that. They want me to put $25,000 up, I don't know what they want me to inspect for $25,000. Part of it goes, I think, Mr. Salerno's received at least $10,000, between five and 10, that I get charged, as they write the letter back, I get charged.
Bye, Ron.
I says, when we started O'Boyle's, we put up, we put up a lot of money for the engineers and I'm glad he's here today, okay? Now, when that building was built, there was drainage in that building, it was underground and all them gutters that were in there, we tied new ones in and put new drainage in, okay? I got, I got charged to inspect that. Their guy came and inspected it. Then, after that was all inspected, then they made me put rain gutter things in the ground. Now, that was a waste, that's okay, I don't mind putting the rain gutters in, but I would like to get my money back for the guy that inspected the work that said it was okay. You know, I was always taught you try to get the rain off your building and into the sewer as fast as we can. Then another time, we're putting an inlet, this all started because I wanted to work with the Moose, which is a good organization. I know they use my parking lot, we don't really need theirs because we all have plenty of parking, but they've always been a good neighbor. So I decided that we want to use, the driveway be open there because we had it on a state road, that opened up another can of worms, okay? When I asked if I could say, oh, the hell with it, let me just enter Friar Gav, no, 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 nobody wanted to change that then. All right, so this has been going on and on and on and I don't, I don't understand. I'm asking you, the councilman in your neighborhood, why don't you guys care that that did that? You know, Billy, you asked me to tear a building down a long time ago and I'm trying to keep this on a positive note, but facts are facts, okay? I know, I'm going to try and take the high room here, so I don't mean this as a hostile environment. You asked me to tear Quonset Hot in the building down, that was the biggest mistake I've made in my whole life since I've been in this town, because you should have looked at that eyesore, then you would have been happy to do it. But because I tore it down and I cleaned it up somewhat, then it sits over there. Why should we have positive things? Because I want to say something to you, I know we're doing better, but we got so many problems still. I want everybody to go by, every day I go by, I go down Mill Street, I go home and I stop and I look in your restaurant and I stop and I look in, I look in that corner restaurant, it's 5:30 when I'm leaving. It should be packed with people, it's not. I mean, we created 320 new jobs in this town, that's a lot of jobs. You're talking about people getting $10 million for 320 jobs. We, all we get is aggravation, we just want to move it forward. The lady tells me that we have in the office here that we have these sewer permits, there's six of them that are registered to that property, we're only using three. No, 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 now they want me to put $2,000 up there. What am I, what is left on that project that I'm spending $25,000 to inspect? You answer me?
Sure.
I'd love to hear it. What is 20, what's $25,000 for?
All right, before you get to Kurt, what else do you have?
I also want to talk about the parking at the rink over there.
Okay.
You know, why, why are we hurting, why are we hurting businesses here? You know when businesses come to this town, and we have some great companies that came in there, that's what's going to turn our town around, there's so many people in that building that work in that town, it's unbelievable. I mean, you just walk through there, a lot of locals work there, okay? And a lot of works at NovaCare, works at these other places, the firehouse, you know, all these places together. We need people, what I'm getting at is when you walk down Mill Street and you look to the left and you look to the right, to this day, it's busy on event days, if you have the, if you have the food trucks and things like that, but there really isn't that much foot traffic. And these businesses that go in there, whether they're for me or not, I don't, it's not about where they rent for me, it's wherever they rent, if they don't have help, you know, we have to be a more friendly business person to say, how can we help them? These people in that building, they say, I don't understand, it's a public rink, yet they could park over at the tennis courts, Grundy, all day long, okay? But I, you know, I'm even willing to pay, but not $30 a parking place, I mean, that's like highway robbery, we already.
$30 a month or a day?
A month.
So it's a dollar a day?
A dollar a day, so if you need 30 cars to park there, and first off, it makes the rink look more successful because there's some cars in.
So you're arguing over a dollar a day?
For 30 cars, $1,000 a month, and does anybody else pay that?
Nobody else is, well, I'm not going to speak to that.
Well, does Grundy pay that over there, when the guy's down at the canal down here where they did the, where Normans was and they gave them all that land, did they pay anything? No. This is, you need to help businesses.
I've paid anything to use.
I'm willing to.
In Harriman.
Where am I, where Harriman?
O'Boyle's, we gave you that.
So that was, you know, Harriman's.
Wait, now let's back up, you're saying nobody paid. We gave you the same deal we gave Lockery on Canal's, Canal's end, we gave you at O'Boyle's. Am I right or wrong?
I wanted to buy it, nobody wanted to sell it. It's the same piece of property that you bought, but I don't want to get into that, Ralph, you know that whole spiral line that went through there.
Hey, you're arguing over a dollar a day, people on Mill Street put money in the meters that work there, that go out all day, spend more than a dollar.
What does it, what does it cost, what's the difference between the back of Mill Street and that parking lot over there, explain to me?
Nothing.
Well, why can't, why can't people park there without being towed?
Even the teachers, what happens Bernard is you put all your cars in, all the teachers park there and before you know it, at 3:00 or 2:30 when everybody's coming into the rink, there's nowhere for them to park.
You have to allow some things for these, for these buildings, these old buildings.
Well, that's a discussion we can have anytime you want.
Yeah, but when does it end?
I like, I like Kurt, when you're done, to explain what is holding up your NovaCare property.
Go ahead.
Do you have anything else besides?
No, I want to hear.
Kurt, why don't you go to the podium?
I've never wanted to come up to the podium faster than I have right now for tonight. I mean, I, this is appalling because we've been working with Bernard for years on this development. We've been trying to coach him through this development. I bet you, there's not a time where we haven't responded either the same day or within days on any request that's ever come in. We have sent the same emails, whether it's to his consultants or whether it's to his attorney, trying to get this project to the finish line. I've gotten a call from most people on council, I've gotten a call from most elected officials, everybody wants his job to happen, including us. But he's his own worst enemy. When you have a property that's spilling out into the public right of way on two streets, in the Pendot's right of way, when you have a driveway that is on the Moose property, what world, not, forget about Bristol Borough, what planet are you on where you don't need a written easement to have that driveway there? When do you build a driveway on a state road and not need a Pendot HOP? These are the things that we've been battling with and we're somehow bullying. Every project we've ever reviewed in my entire tenure has gone through the same process. It's not our fault that it's spilling out on all four sides, the borough property in the back, public right of way on two sides, and Moose property on the fourth side. That requires a lot of administrative documentation. We're not asking for anything that's abnormal and if any, if it goes like it's gone so far during construction, 25 grand might not even be enough. But what I don't think you understand is that 25,000 is a figure that is 10% of what the total construction cost is. Not the cost that we put up, the cost that your engineer puts together.
Who figured that figure?
Whoever put together your financial security.
Why didn't you put that figure together?
Well, we did, because the municipality's planning code, if you. wants his job to happen, including us. But he's his own worst enemy. When you have a property that's spilling out into the public right of way on two streets, in the PennDOT's right of way, when you have a driveway that is on the Moose property, what world? Forget about Bristol Borough. What planet are you on where you don't need a Ritten Easeman to have that driveway there? When do you build a driveway on a state road and not need a PennDOT HOP? These are the things that we've been battling with and we're somehow bullying. Every project we've ever reviewed in my entire tenure has gone through the same process. It's not our fault that it's spilling out on all four sides, the borough property in back, public right of way on two sides, and Moose property on the fourth side. That requires a lot of administrative documentation. We're not asking for anything that's abnormal. And if it goes like it's gone so far during construction, 25 grand might not even be enough. But what I don't think you understand is that 25,000 is a figure that is 10% of what the total construction cost is. Not the cost that we put up, the cost that your engineer puts together. Whoever put together your financial security. Well, we did because the municipality's planning code, if you, you know, you're a big developer, you should know this of all people. You should know that the state municipality's planning code, not the code that this borough put forth, the state's municipality planning code that's in every single municipality in the Commonwealth stipulates that it comes from your engineer, but you wouldn't know that. And you talk about the rain gardens. When you installed the roof leaders and the storm pipe and you tried to do the parking lot, I told you that you shouldn't do things out of sequence. And you said, "Well, I don't know if I ever want to build my new building." Okay, fine. But as soon as you did that work and then came in for the land development to build your expansion on your building, that's when the subdivision land development ordinance kicks in. That's when the stormwater ordinance kicks in. The stormwater ordinance that this borough adopted? Yes. Why? Because it was mandatorily adopted by the Pennsylvania DEP, but you wouldn't know that. So, you come here and you chastise this council, and you chastise this engineering firm, and you do it not just in this room but elsewhere because it gets back to you. And I'm very, I'm appalled by this. We've sent the same email the last four or five times. You can think whatever you want, but everybody in this town, everybody in every town we represent treat the same. And you're no exception. We have this project. This council wants this project. Nobody's holding you back except for you. Amanda will send the exact same email to you tomorrow that we've sent to your attorney at least three or four times in a row. And we get nothing back that's remotely close. They say, "Why do I have to do this with the sewer?" Because DEP requires this borough to do that with your sewer. Okay?
That's what I don't understand. I think, Bernard, you think you're being picked on. We have regulation. When me and Louis built on Maple Street, I think our escrow was 130,000. When I built on Cedar Street, Wood Street, I put up, I think, 90,000. So, it's not you. I'm going by, you submit the price of that job. So, if you submit a $250,000 price tag... Well, he's going off your numbers. 10% is 25,000.
It is.
We didn't give, you didn't, Kurt didn't pick 25. He went off of what you're submitting from what I'm hearing. So...
He's not interested.
Have added the 10% contingency.
What is the 25,000 for to inspect? What's left to inspect on that job?
So, here's how it works.
Can I interrupt you one second? Can you break that $25,000 from point one for people that don't know all the...
So, it's simply 10% of the construction estimate. And as a developer, you have to put up the cost of your public improvements, just like Island View Crossing did. And if, God forbid, there's any kind of result where the project doesn't get completed, the borough has that money as an escrow. It's an insurance policy.
Just like Van Treska put up.
Just like every developer that's ever done business in Bristol Borough. And as you complete those improvements, you get that money back. Not the construction, engineering, and legal escrow. That's a burn down escrow.
Is that part of the 25,000 that he's talking about?
That is the 25,000.
So, he's talking about the 25,000 that Bernard is talking about?
Correct.
Is the 10% of the...
10% for legal and engineering. It's prescribed exactly out of the municipality's planning code. And if the job goes extremely well and there's an excellent contractor on the job, those fees are usually very small compared to if it's a really poorly run job and things aren't built properly. And the disparity between the two are ginormous. You can't imagine how much you have to be on site. And my example of how, we're out there during construction when things get built. Because let's say you buy that property in five years off the developer. Just like when you buy a home and you go to plug your hair dryer and outlet, you expect it to work and there'll be wires properly installed behind the walls. But with site improvements, it's different. You don't get to come in before the walls get sheet rocked and see everything that's there. When you dig a pipe and you put a pipe in the ground, you backfill it and it gets hidden under the ground. So, we spend time out there. If you think that it's a brand new parking lot and there's three inches of asphalt down, you wouldn't want to buy that property and start driving on it and all of a sudden it ruts out. You find out there's only a half inch of blacktop on it. So, that's what we do for the borough. We monitor the construction that gets done at developments to make sure it's built per the spec, per the adopted standards that this borough council has adopted and per what's prescribed in subdivision land development ordinance. So, 25 grand should be more than enough, but it all depends on how well the project goes through its construction. If our guy comes out there on the second or third day and he comes back on the next day and whatever is being done at the time is not being done per the standards, we're going to be out there a lot more than if it's a really reputable contractor and these guys don't know how to cut a corner. And we know who's who. And our guys know what's what. And that's usually how those construction jobs go. And as the work gets completed, so you have 250,000, 225,000 is the construction escrow. Let's say $100,000 worth of improvements were built. An escrow request comes in. This borough processes them very quickly and the money goes back to the developer. Then he pays his contractor. That's how the construction phase of land development goes.
And if you don't want to put it up, you can have a letter of credit.
A letter of credit, yeah, or cash.
Have to just take this money out of your pocket.
250,000, right?
Yeah.
I put up a letter of credit. 250,000. So, the 25,000 is on top of that. So, now, on my own private parking lot, I'm paying 25,000 to have my parking lot inspected, eight lights, two rain gutter things. And I think, who inspects the one, the handicap, I think the state does, correct? You don't even have to do that, right?
The building code official when it's up to the building, and we look at it in the parking lots.
So, with the parking lot, you're going to do two rain gutters. What else? The parking lot itself you're going to do? Sorry, I told you once there, I'm paving.
But are we doing anything different than any other township or municipality?
Absolutely not.
So, I don't understand why you don't, I mean, I try, and I'm going to use myself for an example. I try to save as much money as I can. So, before I start, I make sure everything's been approved, everything's been through the county, the conservation district. I get everything done so I can spend the least amount of money I can in engineering. If they say to me, "You know what? You need to change this," I'm going to change it because the time it's going to take me to have somebody redraw it, resubmit it, review it, get the comments back, I'm wasting my money. And as far as, I don't know, which take like five emails on one item, to me, makes no sense. It's just, and I know how you are. It's like, why do I got to do this? Start picking on me. Nobody's picking on you.
And how many years have we been doing this?
It's just like Van Treska's building. We want to see it done.
Let me ask you something, Ralph. You think it's un, that it's out of the question to say, "Wait a minute. We're stopping the project because we want to change it to LED lights." And then the borough, I can't even get straight from the borough what lights I'm supposed to use. There's two different lights in our town. And then a lot of people in the neighborhood says he wants these high pressure sodiums, whatever they make me. My whole lighting people, you know, nobody uses them anymore.
Municipalities have standard lighting. They like uniformity. Municipalities, they have an adopted standard. They don't want a white light, a yellow light. They want their streetlights to be consistent.
Right.
They have an adopted standard, what type of pole, decorative historic streetlight pole. Okay? And now, I think I was even agreed to as part of Phase 1 of the NovaCare, those historic streetlights. And right in the zoning, not the subdivision land development ordinance, it's also in there as well. But in the zoning ordinance, there's applicability for glare, spill over lights. You're not allowed to just drive down the street and see a bright light. So, you have to show a photometric drawing of your lighting and how it's going to work on your site. Because what we don't want to do is have all these expensive lights bought, installed, and then the next thing you get a letter from the zoning license inspection department saying, "Those lights don't meet the standards. There's a complaint. There's a spill over. There's too high of a glare ratio," whatever it is. And now those lights got to get torn down. So, nobody in their right mind would not want that plan reviewed and approved first because the risk to move forward and install something is insane. Because that's when the money's spent.
And how about the driveways on the PennDOT? Is that necessary?
I think the HOP is in place. I mean, it might have expired. It might have expired twice already with the amount of time that's passed.
But let me explain something to you. First of all, by the state out here, and the state agrees with me, if you clear all, you stop all water from coming there, maybe you want that drain out there. So, that guy is going to waver, okay, from the state.
There's always a highway occupancy permit required by PennDOT for the new driveway. Always. They've never wavered from that. It's a new driveway on a state road. Every driveway, municipal driveway, every driveway gets a permit.
Were you there when a guy told you that some of the things we don't have to do?
I was out there then.
Would you prefer...
Yes, I was. You got a lot of concessions on that.
Okay, no.
From PennDOT, from us.
When we finally went there, what happened to that man from the state? He ends up working for your firm.
That's great. He's an absolute asset force.
Two weeks later, he's working for your firm.
Well, I don't think it's two weeks. I think...
And nobody remembers when he said that.
Okay.
You know, and that's the kind of stuff that...
The only thing I can say is, Bernard, I think that we're going to follow whatever rules and regulations that we're supposed to follow. We want to see this project completed as soon as possible, and I think...
Because you would have tried to do everything you can.
The amazing thing is, is this project has been at the finish line for probably six months or a year, maybe longer. I mean, we're down to the brass tacks. There's a little issue with the EDUs for the sewer because we can't, not unlike other municipalities that made these mistakes decades ago where you willy nilly just let people connect to your sewer without documenting how much flow is coming out sewer and from where, not only from a billing standpoint, that's one piece of it, but from a hydraulic capacity. All of a sudden, we get too much flow in our treatment plant and we surcharge that treatment plant. This borough and its authority has major problems. And there's not many municipalities in Bucks County that are in a good state of health right now with DEP. This borough is. This authority in Bristol Borough is. That's very unique. Something you should be real proud of.
Yes.
So, when we don't just willy nilly say, "Oh, we don't care how much flow is coming out of that building. We don't care what use you're putting in that building." It's all based on how much flow and what's the use. And the architect, not us, his architect, tells our reviewers how much flow is coming out of that building. And that determines how many EDUs get on record with our accounting department and in our connection management plan and all the endless amounts of reporting. I know Mr. Dillon knows all about them with DEP. And they get scrutinized every single year.
So, one of the finish line items is connecting to the source?
It's that and agreements. I mean, I don't think there's much else.
There's a, since I'm being attacked too, what's left now that you have the escrow amount is, and this was put in the approval letter from the council five years ago, is we need a land development agreement, a security agreement, and a stormwater management agreement. Bernard, I drafted those and sent them to your attorney in November. I've asked him five times to have you sign them and send them back, and he has not done that. All you have to do is sign them.
Because you've been wasting time on EDUs and all that stuff.
That's baloney. They're there. All you got to do is...
And we have a meeting. Why is we being charged 25? At least I got an answer today.
You're not being charged 25,000. You're putting that up.
You're charged 275,000.
Listen, you're putting up 25,000. You may use 2,000 of it. As fast as you can get them the information, they're not just keeping your money. You're thinking of, "Well, I got to give them 25,000. It's going to cost me more than that because they're robbing me." No, get the information and get it over with and get moving.
If you see how these bills come in, you'd be upset.
Bernard, how much you think I'm paying for a permit to build a house on Taylor Street? What do you think?
$10,000.
$9,000. To put, is that, am I up here complaining that it's too much? That I spend $1,910 to tap the sewer? $1,000 impact fees for recreation? I mean, I pay it. I don't understand why it's only, every time somebody's...
You pay too. Don't think we don't pay.
No, I'm not saying you don't pay. But like Kurt said in the beginning...
The public and everything else.
You are your own worst enemy. You don't want to just get it done. Okay.
I must be that dumb though. I just can't figure it out.
I know. I'm not saying that. You're saying, "Why do I need EDUs?" That's a requirement from DEP. It's not Ralph's...
I have six of them in there and we're using three. It was an ice cream factory. You don't have to be factoring uses water.
Hey, your architect can illustrate in calculations how much the ice cream business used and how much you plan on using. That's all we're asking for so that we can say, when DEP says, "How did you come up with this?" We say, "Right here. This is it." Been asking for it for probably a year. It's pretty simple.
The things you're saying to me could have been resolved in five minutes.
Absolutely.
Well, then why aren't they? What are they...
You're not giving them the information that they're asking.
We send the same emails.
Six EDUs. We're all using bathrooms. We're all using, we're using four bathrooms on that site. We have six EDUs on that site. Am I right?
This is what we've been dealing with for 10 years.
I was told we have six. We're using three. Why do we have to put up $1,900 for more?
You're not listening to what DEP is asking you for. And there's the problem right here.
Most developers would be starting construction within a week with where we're at right now. Let's see if we can get them to construction within a week.
Can I say something to...
That's all that's left.
Can I address something that he brought up? He's saying that, you said there's no foot traffic on Mill Street. You are really wrong, and that really upsets me. These businesses are so busy, so busy. I go, I'm there all the time. You just want to attack people in addition to causing problems.
I don't think we're going to sit here another... Bernard, whatever you need to help you along, I'm willing to help you. Kurt's willing to help you. The borough is willing to help you. Just answer the questions and get it over with. I mean, there's nobody that's going to say, "We're going to just, okay, forget about it." If DEP comes in here and they want to see the form that you filled out and it's not filled out, we're in trouble. This isn't what we want or council wants or the manager wants. These are state regulations that we have to... How about 25, 30 years ago? You know, that's what everybody goes back to. I mean, you know, if my dad was living today, he'd probably be wanting to kill somebody the way you are. But, you know, things have changed. We need to follow the guidelines.
There's the final rule.
Can I just try to simplify one more time? Because again, I think for a lot of people that are watching this, their heads are probably spinning as well. Because, you know, if you're not a developer, it's confusing stuff. So, Bernard needs to sign the three agreements that Mr. Salerno sent to his attorney, which is land development, security, and stormwater management. And then you're waiting for his architect to get to you on how much water he's going to use.
To the authority, yeah.
To the authority to tap into the sewer line.
How simple is that, Kurt?
Pretty simple. Like I said, most people would have it. The fact that the agreements are already in hand. This is something, a pre-construction meeting could occur in a week. That's how close this project is if all these pieces fell into place.
And you'll send that email again tomorrow?
We'll send the email again. We'll make sure Bernard gets it. I know it's been back and forth with the attorney two or three times. I mean, we'll send an email, give us these three things. We might get one of those three things back and two other, like, not even relevant. I mean, it's like, our minds are blown.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else on this side of the room want to speak? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? On its public participation. Harvey?
Let's talk about the things. On training, we're continuing to do fire and rescue training, but we're also in the process of, over the next couple of months, we have a vet coming in to do animal first aid for firefighters. And we also, in December, we have a class scheduled for first responders, which could include fire, police, and EMS on dealing with people that have autism. The big event for July was, we had the boating accident on the river. We had a speedboat 2:00 in the morning, hit a sailboat, knocked loose off its anchoring. They both floated down the river till they got to the wharf extension, and they both wound up against the wharf extension. Fire department responded. We got, we were able to get down onto the boat. There was one injured party. We got him over to the docks, and they did transport one person to the hospital. But they, the people actually thought that they were at a bridge, which should tell you something.
Yeah, we know. We know what we're saying.
And then the last thing I just want to say is, last month, the fire department had 60 responses in town. Forty of the 60 were directly related to emergency medical services. So, that's where our majority of our time is spent right now. That's it.
Anybody have any questions for Harvey? Chief?
The police department secured an Oxylon grant, significant amount of money, over $50,000. Unfortunately, it's something we need quite desperately. Chief Slack just alluded to, over in the month of July alone, we responded 13 overdoses, one fatal last Friday while we're on Bath Street near the hospital. Wasn't a local person, but apparently somebody looking for help over at Gardenzia. We've been kind of active with the, that warm weather during, again, the months of July, 37 domestic responses. We're continuing with the school to prepare for the school year when it comes to the response, God forbid we ever have to. We have Sergeant Rivera is going to what they call ALIS training, which is a school, it's an acronym for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evacuate. It's basically how to respond, God forbid, for an active shooter situation in the school. We'll be delivering that program to the teachers prior to the school year taking place. We've also scheduled from response training for our own officers with, one of the schools will actually be doing on-hand training in the school. Other thing is we, like Officer Palmer brought up with the fishing with the kids. This is the third year we visited the 21st Century program. We had officers there. The mayor was there. Kilo came out of retirement to see the kids, and we had, Gigi's Ice Cream was nice enough. enough, um, and he gave us a nice, uh, price for everybody, all the kids to get ice cream. So it was a good day. A lot of the guys came off duty to see the kids. And we keep pushing that positive atmosphere and having the ability to meet the school kids and the children in town before it's a response issue. And the value of that's incredible. So that's where we're at.
Any questions for you, chief?
Chief, I have a question. Um, as you not alluded to, stated with the, uh, the overdoses in July, do you, do you have a regular conversation with other, um, chiefs or leaders of departments in the, in the general Bucks County area?
Regarding the amount?
Just in general, I'm saying, is this something that, that is spiking?
Oh, it's a, it's a problem throughout the county and throughout the United States. I mean, I talked to my counterparts back from New Jersey, and it still is. Um, I think because of the treatment center, I think we see a little bit more activity on that.
Yeah, okay.
But it is, it hasn't been-
I guess what I'm saying is, it's just, we are in the middle of a, of an, not just, I'm not, it, we're in the middle of an epidemic.
United States.
Yeah, I don't know what the terminology is used anymore, to be honest with you.
Anybody else have anything for you, chief? All right, Tony, what do you have?
The last couple of months, I've grown up about behind runty towers. You know, we're still dumping back there. There was another load back there. Uh, it just, it looks horrible back there. Um, CDM did put a fence up back there. And I don't know, I'm assuming, uh, CDM, when they installed the fence, uh, shaved the area, uh, whatever, with a backhoe and that, it's just made it worse. Now you have tree roots uprooted and all kinds of stuff back there. I believe they dumped another load of, uh, clippings back there. It just looks horrible. I just wonder when it's gonna get cleaned up and why are we dumping back there?
I think that last time you brought it up, you talked about the mulch. And George, what he said was, it's better to dump the mulch to keep the weeds down. That was his theory, but I think the manager advised him that we wanted it removed. But we talked about this prior to coming out here tonight. We're so shorthanded with so many things going on in Bristol. But once they get done with the grass cutting and things like that, they're gonna address the problem.
Okay. I'm just concerned like, wait too long and then all that stuff's gonna get hard or it has a ton of rock.
Oh, I don't care if it's frozen, the backhoe is what it takes. It's mulch. It's not like you can't-
There's dirt back there now, big piles of dirt and, and trees that were along the fence line. Whatever's along the fence line is now.
Let me just correct you on that. We had to put the fence here because they're dumping the stuff up against the fence. It took our fence down. So when the boys put a new fence up, we pushed it back where it belonged on the borough property. So it's not like, we didn't move our, our debris on the borough property. We moved the stuff off, I mean, it literally collapsed our fence.
So what is the reason we're dumping there? Will you find out from George and get this resolved?
It's not, if you give us a little time, because George is gonna go over there and I had our backhoe for a couple of days. I was out spreading the stuff, but they're so, you know, it's an accumulation from a couple of those storms. So there's a lot-
It's our stuff. It's borough's stuff.
Yeah, I know, but I don't, I don't even mind going back spreading it out. And we can spread it and it'll, it'll-
Without removing it.
Without removing it. And then we're trying to keep the tree roots. There's some dead trees that were-
There's a lot of dead trees back there.
Fell over. There's still some up and, but, you know, we're trying to, you know, we're trying to get rid of it so we don't have to, I know George, when I talk to him, those guys are, you know, they're busy. And I figured if I can, you know, if I can help out. But I don't want you to think that they pushed up from CBN onto the borough. That was, that was against our fence. They, they literally took our fences down. You know how-
The fences was, it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, I just, I just don't wanna keep adding to it. Because there was just another, you know, another load was taken back.
Yeah, I seen him today up in Harriman taking trees down. So maybe they're mulching and just dumping-
But, but trying to dust dumping there, where did, where did the mulch go?
I can't, I can't answer that. I don't know. I know they could take it to Marsville.
And it was a, I, I was told that they were, we were taking it to the place up by, past Curry or Thomas on the left-hand side. I don't know what timeframe that was or when.
Maybe in Marsville that takes mulch.
And we're not just, we're not doing that any longer? Or just?
I can't answer that.
Can we do, I mean, I know some municipalities where they create the mulch and have residents come pick it up. Is it to that point where-
You gotta be careful where you put it because mulch starts burning on its own. Am I right, Harvey?
Yeah, we had problems.
We had problems with, with fires like that. So even dumping it there, I don't know why we're, you know, the borough's dumping it. So I, can you please look into it and get this resolved?
[laughing]
What else, Tony?
That's all I have.
Louis? Dave?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Dillon, uh, I'm still getting complaints about the Pine Street and Screw Street alleyway. If you could send an inspector down there, uh, to warn those people who are not taking care of the back of their properties, I'd appreciate that. Also, in the middle of that alley, there is a mulberry tree, um, that's growing, um, and some limbs are down. And there's a Pico wire there. If you could contact Pico and maybe get that tree trimmed in the middle of that alley, as they did on Coursey Street last month, that'd be good. Uh, 933 Garden Street, that's that empty lot where the trailer is. That, that, that lot is a mess.
Incite it, Dave.
Okay. Give that guy a warning, it'd be great. And, uh, there's a pothole at Headley and Pine. If, uh, one of the guys would take care of that, I'd appreciate it. Okay, that's all I have.
Where, where was it? Headley and Pine?
Headley, yeah. Thank you.
Tony?
Um, the only thing I have is I saw, I was going into Selecto and I don't know if you're aware, there's a light hole that has a major lean on it on the, on the, well, my gosh.
It's been, it's been that way for a couple of years.
Oh, that? So we're not worried about that?
No. My knowledge, we're not worrying.
Okay.
No, it's, we're aware of it. Greg, what do you have?
Um, so I have the zoning hearing board agenda for Wednesday, September 5th, in front of me. Um, there is an appeal for the River Group Equities that, basically Simon and Schuster. Uh, it, it's a variance to allow multiple principal uses. Seems like a good idea to me. Seems like a logical, practical use of that building. Um, I wouldn't claim to know all of the ins and outs of that application just now, but I guess the point in saying this is, if you live on Seabird or if you live in Harriman or, you know, you're interested in Bristol at all and you would like to hear a little bit more about what's going on there, uh, they're gonna be appearing before zoning, um, in September. And I think it's a positive development that that building will hopefully become occupied and more jobs and more, um, people in town. I also would like to apologize for my dress. Um, as a business owner, sometimes things pop up and I just got out of my basement in, uh, on Mill Street about five minutes before the meeting. So I apologize for that. That's all.
All right.
Uh, I would like to inquire about, uh, the seven, at 1700 Farragut Avenue, it was Danus's previously. I wanna know, um, that place, it just looks so bad. And, um, I just wanna see what we can do about, um, getting ahold of the owner and, and see what's going on with that building. Also, um, the Worthington Building on Farragut Avenue, around the back, there's asphalt, cement, grass piled up. And then there's about five booths, there's a jacuzzi, um, there's truck, caps for trucks back there. Uh, it, it's a mess back there. Um, I would like you to send the inspector out there as well. Um, and on a personal note, um, my mom has been really sick and I wanna thank everyone, all of our friends, family, and, um, the town members have been reaching out to me and I really appreciate it. Keep praying for my mom. She needs the prayers. Thank you.
Tony?
Um, just, um, if somebody can, I know, I know our, the guys are really busy, but there are some really deep potholes on Otto Street, uh, past the 300 block. And, and, um, I wanted to see if somebody can go out and check them out. I also, um, spoke to Tony Ricchio earlier. Um, we had a zoning situation that was passed that we're looking into, um, filing an appeal because it's not in the right, in my opinion, the right area where meets the standards of parking. But we're gonna look into that and probably file an appeal finally this month. Um,
Four foot three.
I also have been meeting monthly with Jesse Steele from a woman's place. We're looking to bring that organization back into Bristol. As soon as I have more information about it, I will let everybody know. Uh, I think we need it in this area, whether it's Bristol, Bristol Township, and, uh, the working tyrus need to figure out what's the best spot for them. And I also would like to thank the Puerto Rican Culture Association. Me and Ralph, um, had an opportunity to go down there on Puerto Rican Day. It was a beautiful event. Lots of people from in and out of town, lots of food. They did a beautiful job. And the next day, the parking lot was immaculate. I was really high, I think it was 7:30 in the morning and people were out there cleaning it up. So thank you to them for keeping it nice and clean and giving us such a beautiful day.
Yeah.
Um, just a couple of things. One, I want to, uh, thank Officer Palmer for the excellent job that he's doing with the Fish for the Cop. Um, Chief and I had talked about this and I, I think it's, all fits into the piece that we try to do under community policing. Just give the council a little update on, uh, in the police station, we've installed the new access system to get in to the, uh, police station. Uh, headquarters security cameras have been installed. Uh, the system has been installed on each, uh, police officer's desk, which allows them to, uh, to check on the cameras. Uh, one additional camera was added to cover the, uh, the evidence room. Um, gun locker has been installed and car nine replacement, which the council approved, uh, will be ordering, will be a 2018 Ford Deceptor. Also too, I think we reported earlier in the month that, uh, through a grant, we were able to procure an automated license plate reader, which we'll probably get sometime later this year that will help us in, uh, doing some of our investigations. And I think that's it.
Uh, you want me to do mine or you have, I got a lot of stuff to do there. Everybody's quick. Okay. Uh, September's meeting, we have to fill, reappoint or fill vacancies on all our boards and commissions. So I'm giving everybody a month notice at the September meeting. The list again, reappoint, don't reappoint, whatever you guys wanna do. But look at your list, yous all have them. You should know who's expired, who isn't expired. And we need to get that resolved in the September meeting. Uh, our website, some, it's not being kept up, like I would like to see it kept up, the borough's website. And like Bill said, a lot of people go on them. We're trying to get somebody on a, to volunteer their time that'll come in and maybe work on things like this. I, uh, I'm gonna recommend the council and I'm gonna ask her if she would do it. Somebody like Amy McElvein or somebody that's good at that, you know, keeping things up to date. So again, I'm gonna approach her to let me know what's going on with that. The Do-Op concert's coming up in September. We'll have our September meeting prior to the Do-Op. It's the third Saturday in September. It's a great event. So if you go on, uh, the website, you'll see, uh, there's a video that Craig Whitaker made, and I think it's on the borough website also, that, uh, you can go on UFC, the groups are, and everything this year. Is there any word appeal that you guys talked about? Saint Anne Carnival, Saint Mark's Saint Anne Carnival is starting Tuesday the 21st and running this year through Sunday to 26th. So we never did a matinee, I think maybe 19 years ago, or this is like 20 some years. But I think we tried it the second or third year. Ended up raining that Sunday. So we really don't know what it's going to do, if people are gonna come out on Sunday or not. We're hoping it's, it's a huge success. We have a new carnival company this year coming in with all different rides for the kids. So we elected to, on Saturday night, wristbands are every night at $16. On Saturday night, we're gonna take $2 off. We're gonna call it Bristol Night. So any kid that wants to come and ride the rides from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., it'll be $14. And we're gonna do a special on Sunday. And I talked to Annoviracy and a couple of people. We're gonna do a $10 special. So the wristbands will be $10. Now, the carnival company, you have to pay them their money. They don't care if you sell them for a dollar, if you sell them for $5. So the $6 that we're taking off the wristband, I committed some money towards that personally and is going to commit something. So we don't know if there's gonna be 50 wristbands sold or 500 wristbands sold. So the higher the number, the more money we gotta raise to pay the carnival company. But I think it's something to show our appreciation to everybody that, you know, people that can't afford the $16, could come Sunday for $10 and ride for, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. So hopefully the weather's great and that the church, uh, could profit out of this because it is a major fundraiser for Saint Mark's Church and the school and keeping Saint Anne's Parish, uh, still going. So I wanna thank Father Mooney for his dedication in this by, he made a commitment to keep Saint Anne Church going. And he kept his commitment for now, it's over four years, that we still have mass there every Sunday. We still have weddings. We still have funerals. And I think that we need to show him our commitment. I spoke in church about this a few times, that how thankful we are still to be in operation today, four years later. So we owe him, you know, a great deal of appreciation. So come out and support the carnival, spend some money and, and enjoy yourself. The other thing is Tommy Mucie, former councilman, Anthony Mucie's son, is in the military and was just deployed to, uh, serve in Kuwait for at least nine months. So let's keep him in our prayers and hopefully bring him home safe. He's stationed in Hawaii. He has three children and, uh, he got an order that he's being shipped out, I think, this week or next week.
Here, I think he went.
Already?
I think so.
I thought he was leaving this week or whatever.
I saw it on Facebook that he went.
Let's just keep him in our prayers and have him returned safely to his family. Let me see what else I got. Uh, Rackliff Cafe. Uh, I was approached by Vince from the Rackliff Cafe. And, uh, if you ever go to the Rackliff, a long fence, it's borough property, but everybody parks there. And what Vince is asking for, if he can pave that section, I think it's like 200 feet by 50 feet, pave that and just use it, it's all snowplow, he's using it anyway, but just to make his property look a lot better. He's not looking for a lease. He's not looking for anything from the borough with the understanding that if the borough ever opened that street up, that's part of that street. I forgot what it's, what that street's, Harrison Street, uh, if we ever would. But, uh, at his expense, he's willing to do all that. It's probably a $15,000 cost at least to, to pave that strip. So the solicitor, I think it's in everybody's packet to vote on tonight to give him permission only to use it, not to, so it'll be the same thing. It'll be a license like we did with Bernard and the same thing we did with, uh, Lockery's Building on Mill Street, that if the borough ever wants that ground, there's no obligation that, you know, we can't use it anytime we-
And he won't be messing with it right away there, right?
No.
I'm saying, he won't be messing with what we do.
Whenever you see them cars parking now, he's just gonna blacktop that to make, make it clean, snow plowing so much easier and people walking out of the restaurant.
Right.
Matter of fact, I, I told him, I would like to see him put a fence across the back with a gate in case we gotta go there to stop. There's a lot of people dumping back there.
A lot of tires.
A lot of dumping.
Tires all over.
And he cleans it out at his expense. He cuts the trees at his expense. So I wouldn't be opposed, I don't know how council feels, about a fence going across to stop people from dumping in there. Because then the only other way to get in is through the back where Worthington's property is.
The other dump.
So if you're not opposed to that, we can make that part of this agreement. And he's gotta put a fence up also. And, uh, this Saturday coming is African American Day, I think Saturday, the 18th. So if everybody gets a chance, it'd be nice to stop down and attend that event. The, from what we're understanding, and I don't wanna, I need a chance to talk to Greg or Lorraine prior to- to Greg or Lorraine prior to tonight, but the property on the river, and we keep saying it's gonna get started, it's gonna get started, but from what we're understanding, that by the middle of September, you should see a lot of activity going on down, hopefully on that property, so hopefully that, you know, we keep hearing it, but we're hearing some good information, and I'm only saying that from your say right now, but from what I'm hearing, you're gonna see a lot of activity down here in September, hopefully, people are getting this from, uh, has good information. The last thing I want to say is that the Borough's gonna lose a great employee, as far as I'm concerned, uh, Brittany Nelson has handed in her resignation today, and has decided to move on to another job with, you know, more pay and things like that, and I think she did an outstanding job here. I'm very disappointed that she's leaving, and sad to see it, but you gotta understand at her age, with a child, she needs to do what's right for her family and to move on, but Brittany, you're truly gonna be missed.
Thank you.
On the agenda.
Thank you all.
We're gonna call the agenda tonight to accept her resignation. Uh, jump on over to the place, is that it? You guys have anything else? No, so what do we have, one agenda item? Do you have the agenda?
Yeah.
That was in the packet, uh, you know, but it's, uh, what we're gonna add to this is Brittany, right?
And the.
Appeal. And the appeal for the zoning decision. Okay, so, somebody had Brittany and somebody had the appeal. All right, so.
Do you want to do a motion? Oh, you're gonna close this out there?
I'm gonna close this and then open the, the next meeting, right? So, I'm gonna close this meeting, and we're opening up the regular council's August 13th meeting, which is our, uh, agenda meeting, so at this time, I'm gonna open up, again, public participation, if you have anything they want to say, go to the podium.
Kevin Brannigan, I'm sure you all know me, I just have a question about giving the property to Vince. Now, you're saying you're giving him the property to park and straighten up, right, for people to park on it, right? What happens if somebody gets hurt, who's liable?
I think he's got $4 million worth of insurance.
So, so, he's parking his Patriots on Borough property, so if something happens to a Patriot, sprains an ankle, car loses control, it's not the Borough's pro, it's not the Borough's responsibility?
I don't think it's our responsibility right now, is it? The agreement, you mean on his property or our property?
I'm talking about your property, the 50 by 200.
So the license agreement provides that he provides primary insurance, of course, the Borough always has secondary insurance, because we're the owner, so if something were to happen there, they, his insurance would go first, and I think we're requiring a million or $2 million, whatever we usually require.
How come they don't have a lease? How come you're not leasing that property?
Okay, so, uh, we've been through this before, so understand the difference, with a license, you're not getting an exclusive use, in other words, anybody from the public can park there, it's a license that says we're allowing you to improve our property, you can continue.
How can I get that?
Because you wanted exclusive use, you didn't want other people to be able to go on your patio, that's a lease, that's what Bernard was asking for, from the rink, you want an exclusive use, that's a, that's a lease, you have to pay for that. With a license, like we have a number in town, it's open to the public, if somebody from, from, uh, Lennox Property, or when they develop Riverfront North, wanna park their cars there, they can park it, Vince can't say anything.
Okay.
It's still open to the public, so that's the risk he takes, he's putting money into property that he doesn't have the exclusive use for.
I understand.
That's the difference.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to clear up.
When we talked about it, you said, "I want to improve this, I want to put up pavers, I want to do a wall," I says, "Well, why don't we just do benches with some red tibble?" Do you remember that?
Yeah.
And what was your comment to that?
I wanted to develop it.
No, you didn't want anybody else to sit on them benches.
Well, if I was, well, if I was insuring it and using the property, and it was, I was covering that property, well, of course.
We could've gave you the same thing, and said, "We don't want anything, you put benches and all out there instead of parking cars, but whoever sits there."
Oh, we don't want to park cars there.
No, what I'm saying is, we could've told you, Kevin, we don't want to charge anything, you improve it, put all your tables, whatever you wanted out there, but anybody that wants to sit there can sit there. Am I right?
Yeah, so, you're right, yeah, I didn't, you're right, I didn't want that, so I was just trying to determine the difference between the lease and the license.
Well, you could've just called me and asked me about that. That's the difference. All right?
That's, that's all, thank you.
All right. Anybody else? I didn't follow the spirit. All right, let's start with, uh, Joe, you have anything, right? All right, number three on the agenda.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the council meeting minutes of 7:918, accept the treasurer's report for June of 2018, accept the police and DJ's report for July of 2018, accept the fire chief's report for July of 2018, accept the inspection department report for June and July of 2018, accept the public works department report for June and July of 2018, and accept the harbor report and decisions for 7:30, 2018.
I have a second, second by Lorraine, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number four.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend Chapter 15 of the codified ordinances to add new sections to prohibit the parking of certain vehicles and trailers in public parking lots.
Second by Mr. Rodriguez, questions or comments?
Yeah, I, the only comment that I have is, I just hate that, I hate to keep adding new ordinances and mending stuff, just to add more stuff, because it just opens it up for more, uh, selective enforcement, like reading this, new sections to prohibit the parking of certain vehicles and trailers in public parking lots, and like to me, in Bristol, there's so many people who have their own business, you know what I mean, that they're just trying to make a living, to, you know, just, just to have, you know, somebody who would have the ability to come and harass, not harass them, but, you know, make a move because of, of their work truck or work vehicle, what specifically, what type of vehicles are we talking about? Like, when it says certain vehicles, what are we talking about, size wise?
Do you want to explain this?
Yes, we, at the previous two council meetings, we discussed this, it was basically from citizens complaint, mostly in the area of Mill Street Lot, it's becoming an RV park, um, so I don't think you really want Mill Street.
All right, so can we just make, that's what I'm saying, I don't want to make it the Borough, because now, if it's the Mill, if it's the Mill Street parking lot, is one thing, to me, this goes across.
It's also, I've been, the issue on Lennox, we had, not Lennox, not really, because that's private property, but the pocket, pocket lots, up by Jefferson and stuff like that, same complaints, they're coming from there also.
And which one?
Up by Jefferson, we've had some trailers pull into there, we had another RV up behind, um, off of Garden at the end, uh, there's people, unfortunately, and it's, sometimes the people that are without means buy a vehicle, whether it's a camper or a small, large utility vehicle, and it becomes a home, and if you don't do something to control that, you're fighting these type of things.
I mean, we're not saying people can't drive their work truck home, or their pickup truck, or, we're talking about RVs, we're talking about trailers on the back of pickup trucks that are taking up four or five parking places on the street when there's no parking now. I mean, I went down Mill Street today, the guy that was in the parking lot was parked on Mill Street.
Yeah.
So, you know, is this what you want? I understand that we're trying to not beautify the town, but we're trying also to create parking for residents.
I know, I get that.
That live on these streets that have nowhere to park now.
It also just seems to me, um, that because we don't have a clear ordinance on this, that we're being taken advantage of.
We are.
Because the other, you know, municipalities that have cleaned up their ordinances, they're, they're flocking to us because we haven't, let's just.
Do I also have any questions, Tony?
Are we required to, to the parking lot be vacant at a certain time? We, I know we discussed that, and, okay. So how, how about, I know, I have, I have an issue with the other, the, the, uh, company on Cedar and Mill Street, they have the large trucks down there all the time, and then you can't, if they're down the other end, they're down towards this end, but you can't, sometimes you can't drive there, the trucks are, one truck is really long.
Yeah.
You know?
I think this ordinance is gonna handle all of it.
It'll handle that, right? I mean, I, you know, I think people are just taking advantage of the, the parking lot, you know, you have a business.
I'm in a storage place for their business.
Right, like we don't park your vehicles there, and, you know, you don't park construction vehicles down there or anything like that, so it's, uh, I think people are just taking advantage of it.
That's why we did this.
And this, will we be the authority to tow, if we need to?
Chief, how old are we?
At this point, we're not looking to tow, right, but it's, I don't believe we really have the authority to tow at this point, it would be, it's ticking at this point, but then it rolls into the, that never-ending battle of the abandoned vehicle aspect, it has to move every 48 hours, has to be inspected, has to be operable, that's where we're rolling to that.
How does it, if somebody gets cited, they get cited three occurrences, my, I'm worried about they go to the judge, you know, the, the district judge, and he just wakes it out, and, I, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but I'm just saying if somebody goes with a nice soft story or something, and, you know, and then we're back at square one again, and that's a possibility.
We'll have to address that as it comes about, but, you know, the ordinance is written properly, it's got significant standards in it, or penalties, and it starts at 100 to 1,000, so I think.
Nice.
So what is the, well, I guess that's where, the problem that I have with it, isn't the idea behind it, it's certain vehicles, what is the description?
18 foot longer.
It's in there, it's in there, it was written, now, you read that, it tells you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Basically, the same restrictions we have on the street, now we're putting them in the parking lots, for some, whatever reason, we had no restriction in the parking lots.
Yeah, it was all in the, it was actually the zoning, the R1s and the town center.
So, so, again, people took advantage, they said, "Okay, I can't park in the street, so I'm not going in these parking lots," and remember, the whole idea of these pocket parking lots was for people to park their cars, and now you're finding boats in there, and trailers, and RVs, and, uh, and we do allow you to put one of those vehicles on your property, as long as it's on a pervious surface and all, so it's not like we're saying you can't have a boat, you can't have an RV, but we don't want them taking up other people's spots. So, it's, we didn't change, we just expanded what we had to put it on to, from the streets into the parking lots.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution to authorize purchase of 1015 L Street for $57,000.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? Only comment I would like to make is that this is the last property there, and hopefully, uh, we could finish up on Justin Street, or just let it stay, but, again, we haven't approached one person yet to sell our properties. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number six.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve Bristol Borough Wharf Pier and Dock Endowment Fund Agreement.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? Everybody understand what that is?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Mr. President, I'd like to approve the agreement contractor for the toll ship Gazella Premier to be docked at the low, lower floating dock in Bristol Borough on October 19th through 21st.
Second by Mrs. Collin, Mr. Pezz, you got your hand up? I know, with you or Lorraine, I seen a hand up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agreement between the Borough and Vincent and Robin DeMarco conveying a license to DeMarco to use and improve a portion of the Borough's property on Harrison Street, 50 by 200, for parking for DeMarco's retail restaurant located at 1705 Ratcliffe Street.
Second by Ms. Collin, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Number.
Mr. President, it's with a very heavy heart that I would like to make a motion to accept Brittany Nelson's resignation from employment with the Borough.
Second by, hold on, let's suspend the rules and add the agenda. Suspend the rules. Oh, you added the four, you added, okay. We added two things during the work session. Right. Second by Mr. Pezz, questions or comments?
No, I'd just like to make one comment, I'd just like to thank you, Brittany, for your time with us, and your very helpful, very noble work. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Number.
I'd like to make an, uh, appeal for zoning, for a zoning motion with the use of the bicycle
Second by Mr. Ricchio, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pardon me? Brian, let me make sure we have this.
Did anybody make a motion to adjourn?
You have a motion to adjourn? I love that.
He lets the children watch us, this is what my son said, he's watching the period. I want to see daddy get a fight.
Mr. Catroci, second by Ms. Rodriguez.
Let's go.